Wall clock always takes forever to turn. It's already five on your phone.
Yeah, Nikki said it's five. It's five o'clock and we're going to call the Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting. That's being replaced for the one that was supposed to be in during the inclined weather to order. Pam is going to lead us in the pledge and Mike is going to lead us in prayer and pray for our mayor who's out sick. Pray for the people that that died during this storm and pray for those that are still without water.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America. In the clear and holy religion stands, one nation, under God, and in the good will, with liberty and justice strong.
That's great. Our Father which art in heaven, we thank you for this day and thank you for this time that we come to try to do the business of the city the best we can. Dear my Father, just pray that you be with the sick and the shut in, be with the mayor tonight and everybody else. Dear my Father, may be safe. I ask this in the name of Jesus and thank thee. Amen.
Amen. Roll call Miss Kate?
Yes. Bill White is absent. Jacqueline Granbury.
Here.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Lily Alderson.
Here.
And Pam Johnston.
Here. Pam, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Pam, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to make motion to suspend the rules and move item 11.E. The audit presentation to after 4.B.
So we're going to go through the minutes and then do the that's a motion she needs a second on, but we're going to go through the minutes and then have the auditors make their presentation. So we can go ahead and go into the
Can I have a second?
Yeah.
Is somebody a second?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. At this time, we're going to do approval correction of the minutes from the prior meetings. Study sec.
Can you vote on that? Sorry.
I'm sorry. We brought on suspending 11E until after 4B.
Yeah.
All in favor? All opposed?
Motion passes. Okay.
Now, could we go to the full or correction of the minutes from the prior meeting study session December the fourteenth, regular meeting December the nineteenth of twenty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion that we approve a study session and regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All
That's it. Motion passes.
At this time, we'll have the audits go forward.
Yes, we're ready for you. Glory's yours.
All right, thank you very much. I'm Dan Hancock with Putman and Hancock. We think this opportunity to be in front of you and go through the audit report there. Can't remember it's some eighty or ninety pages. We could be here for a while tonight, maybe till the next No, but I'm going to try to get through pretty quick as I can. Shipra has put up on the screen up here, page one, which is a summary page, and I'll get to that in just a minute. But you've probably had a presentation similar to this in the past, but to let you know, the audit reports that you have in front of you, the auditor's opinion is a clean, unqualified opinion. It takes us three pages to tell you that, but we do have that in there. So just wanted to give that information to you. I think previously, the Shipra may have indicated, if you would take a look at pages four through ten in that audit report, that's pretty well a good summary. It's called management's discussion and analysis, and really that summarizes a lot of the changes in the financial statements for the year. The financial statements similar to what you've seen in the past are separated in two components. One is up front, a couple of pages. That is the they're on an accrual basis, if you will, and then on back is the various government funds that you normally see. So I just want to highlight a few things. If you go to your page four, and that's page four up there, and just to give you some quick references of where some things are, numbers that are on that page for you to take a look at maybe later on. If you'll see in the first paragraph, it talks about, it says assets of the city exceeded liabilities by fifty-one million. That fifty-one million is on page four. I'm sorry, page seven. Put it back and there's a table there. If I get a chance to get to that. And that table is split between government activities and business or enterprise funds. Business and enterprise interchangeable, and it splits it between twenty-two and twenty-three. And that fifty-one million is over in the total column down at the bottom, down there where it says total net position fifty-one million, two hundred thousand, or it's in millions, I mean. Excuse me. And then you'll see another number there on that same paragraph, nineteen million. That is also on page seven. And if you look midways through that table, it'll say long-term liabilities and to the far right there, twenty-three, it has twenty-three million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And the difference between that and the seventeen million the year before is that five point nine million. And that five point nine million is debt that's been taken on by two issues associated with it. The second paragraph talks about the total net position, five point five million. You can look on page eight. And if you go to eight, page eight, that's really your income statement. The first page, seven, was the balance sheet on accrual basis, and page eight is the income statement on an accrual basis. And that five point five million is down at the far, at the very bottom in the total column for year twenty-three, and you'll see the five point five million on the app right here.
We still can't read it.
I can't either unless I get
But we're trusting you on that.
It's there. Trust me, that's a number. So a couple of other numbers in that paragraph. It talks about the funds increased a million, two. Now, this is going to the funds side of things, and you go to page eight. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm into the government side of government activities. And on that same page, eight, the first column for twenty-three, at the very bottom, you'll see a number increase in net position. That's net income, if you will. One point two million. Go back to page eight. This column. So this is government. This is business or enterprise. This is twenty-three, twenty-two. Come on down a little bit or up. There is the one point two, sort of profit, if you will, and there's the five point five that's consolidated. This right here has all your enterprise funds for utilities and sanitation fund here for Let's see here. It talks about capital assets in that same paragraph going up eleven point five million. That's a table for your capital assets, again, from government and enterprise or business funds, and the change here in the cost from here to here is that eleven point nine million. And that is primarily for the utility improvements, substantial portion, fortunately, that's Two more bullets, I guess it'd be the one, two, three, fourth bullet down. It talks about the fund balances on the government funds going up six point five million. That's on page thirteen. Now we're at the funds, the government funds level. Well, let's see here. I'm at thirteen going up to six five. Now, it's on page thirteen. Yeah. That's six, the fund balances. Now, I'm at the government funds, and I may be talking Greek, and I'll try to clarify that in just a minute, but the fund balance here is rounded up to six. It says six million, four eighty-seven. We're just rounding to six point five, but that's at the government funds level. To try to clarify government funds versus the government activities, are y'all familiar with that? Or I'd be happy to try to explain it without trying to confuse you even further. The government funds is what you see every month here with Shipra and them. They're basically modified accrual basis, basically they're cash basis numbers. And then when you go to the front, when we go to statement of activities and statement of net position, that is adjusting the cash basis numbers to accrual basis, adding in additional receivables for the revenues and payables, debt and things like that are being put on the books, and fixed assets are being put on the books. At the funds level, when you buy something, you just expense it as a capital outlay. On the government activities side of things, you set it up as an asset. So when they're looking at you for debt purposes and things of that sort, they're going to look at the government activities side of things because that's accrual basis, and that's what they look at, just like any other business sitting out there. So just to kind of let you, there's a perspective on that. So, and that kind of brings me to the next point, which the mayor was very happy to hear about. Y'all had a great year, and when you get into debt service coverage, which is what bond rating agencies and so forth look at, at the government funds level, your debt service coverage this year was six point three seven times. That's phenomenal. Okay. Most of the time, if you can get most of the bonds and so forth, one point one five, one point two five, so you are at six point three. Extremely good. And across, that's at the government level, and when you go across and you pick up your enterprise funds or your business funds, it comes out to five point one five. Still phenomenal. Compared to the year before, it was at three point two. So you had a good year.
Is this because of Shipra?
Which leads me to my next comment. No, and I'll come back on that in just a minute. Really, I can get into a lot more minutia and so forth, but I just really wanted to kind of give you an overview of everything, that the financial statements are clean and unqualified. Subject to your approval, they will be submitted to the comptroller's office, and everything will be good there. We do want to thank Shipra and her staff for, we had a switch this year with auditors and things. She had to come in and take over the throttles in the last few months of the fiscal year, and they just did a fantastic job, and then they had to put up with us. And we had, you know, so it was a pretty cooperative effort right there, but we really do thank them and everything that they did to
If you remember, the last auditor that we still had a contract with could not take us, and so they come in at the last minute, and it was a struggle, I'm sure, for both parties, but everybody worked very well together. So you're voting to accept the audit. You're just seeing it. You may have questions. You may have things going forward, so all you're doing is accepting what they're presenting.
Right.
I'm just thankful you gave the CD.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You have a real, you're very fortunate.
Yeah.
Very fortunate right there. So we really do appreciate working with them, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to go all the way back to Fayetteville. Sure.
Better than last week.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just to clarify on the, what Dan was trying to explain on the governmental funds versus the enterprise funds, the governmental funds that's up on the screen right now, that's our general fund, streets.
General capital projects, debt service, and a lot of other small debt
Debt service. And it's just that other, the other is just covering the industrial development board fund that we have. We have a drug, the drug fund, so all of that other includes all those little bitty funds that are put together.
Several of those that go across, and this is at the funds level, and then you take these numbers here, and then you adjust for certain accrual items to add fixed assets or capital assets, if you will, then you add debt back, and then make some adjustments for property taxes and things like that. But basically, then that number rolls forward, that ten million would roll forward.
As the beginning fund balance for this fiscal year.
Yeah.
So the fund balances, the total fund balances, that's the parts that, that's where we're sitting at at the end of the year in our governmental funds, and then when you look at our, the business type activities, every time the audit says governmental funds, you're looking at funds that are ran by property taxes and stuff. So that, and every time you see business type activities, that's all the utility funds that are run by
Chartered.
Property and sales tax. So that will help as you guys go through it to, because we do have two different types of accounting that we do in our office, and that's what he was explaining to you. Governmental funds are handled completely differently on the financials. The enterprise funds, which are our utility funds, they're done completely differently on the books. So when we come in, when they take all of it and give it to the comptroller's office, but they have to take both those types of accounting, still represent both those types of accounting, but they also have to merge them all together and show them that we're one big business as well. So it's a pretty, pretty big
It's a pass.
It's a pass.
And something I did want to mention, she hit on, the enterprise funds are already on the full accrual basis.
Correct.
So it's just the government funds that have to be converted over to the business type
Business type activity as well. So they treat it like one big business, but they also have to show us as, like, the governmental funds cannot, not treated like a business. So both of those, you'll see some numbers repeated throughout the audit because you have to represent them in different formats that the comptroller's office wants. And then there's debt, there's debt schedules out there, and those are usually very helpful in the past for commissioners and stuff. If you want to look at that, how much the city owed on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, all those debt schedules are out there as well.
As a matter of fact, I was going to tell them
Okay.
There's a debt schedule back here. That's probably the next most important schedule for you as a commissioner to know. The page is beginning on page sixty-seven back here. Let's see if that starts with the debt.
Yeah.
So
Sixty-eight, maybe.
Taxes. So sixty-eight starts with the debt, and that gives you a breakdown between the principal and the interest that's due by fiscal year, starting for twenty-four, and it rolls all the way out through the, it's a full amortization of each debt obligation that you have. and you can see there on that page sixty-eight, that's showing for the general obligations, and it breaks them down there, and then on page sixty-nine, it breaks it down by the water and sewer fund, and then on page seventy, by the sanitation fund debt. Lastly, on that page seventy-one is the power system debt, utility board. the notes, if you have some time, sometime you want to go to sleep, the footnotes that are required here to explain those, two pages up front begin on page twenty-six, and they go through page fifty-five. We have to have that many pages to explain two pages. It's just
Requirements.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it. If y'all, if y'all go through it and come up with any questions, you know, just if you want to email them to me, I can get with auditors, get y'all answers. If I can answer them, I'll answer them. Me and Chastity will do our best to answer them.
Yeah, thankful for, good for.
It's better every year.
We entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make the motion. We accept the audit as presented.
All in favor? All opposed?
Motion passes.
Next, this is the audit presentation that's to be appointed by the mayor, and he's not here, but he'd already discussed who was going to the beer board. Kate, you want?
Yes, so the beer board members are David Workman, William Bryson, and Jimmy Hines, and they've all agreed to serve for another term. Can we do all these together, Corey, or should we do each board separately?
Do each board separately, and if you can, say that they're replacing somebody or if they're a full term.
Those are the beer board members, and then we're basically just reappointing them, and they've all agreed to that. It's a one-year term up in January.
We entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the beer board as presented.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Next?
Passes.
Next is the planning commission.
Communication.
I mean, I'm sorry, communication commission.
And everybody has the same. I have not heard from the mayor, so I would recommend that you make a motion that the board stays the same at this time, and I've told Ms. Granbury that can always make that change. It's again, another January to January term, so everybody else that has the same people on that, I think we're okay.
At this time, we entertain a motion for the communication board committee.
I'll make a motion. We leave the communication committee as is.
All in favor? Opposed? Next is the planning commission.
Yes, and Cedric Collis has agreed to another term, and then the mayor is recommending Chris Irvin to take the place of Bobby Nutt. And that Bobby Nutt's term would go to September of two thousand and twenty-six.
Do those have to be two separate, or can they just be one?
I think they can be one. There's just two votes on the planning commission.
Okay.
Entertain a motion for the planning commission.
I'll make a motion that we accept Cedric Collis and Chris Irvin on the planning commission.
Second. All in favor? Opposed?
Motion passes.
Next is the recreation commission.
And the terms that have expired and they've agreed to additional terms are Lou Emma Micklin, Misty Grooms, and Larry Patton, and they would go till January of two thousand and twenty-seven.
Entertain a motion. We plant recreation committee.
I'll make a motion. We accept the recommendations for the recreation commission.
Yeah, good. All in favor? Opposed?
Motion passes.
Completion and review unfinished business from priming on this two thousand and twenty-three dash one two oh. This is a public hearing and final reading. This is the ordinance revising and updating the building and related permit fees pursuant to the two thousand and eighteen edition of the International Building Code as amended and as adopted by the city of Mount Pleasant.
And vice mayor and commissioners, this is something that's second reading, but Chris brought before you last month, and then at the study session, it's basically because we purchased the local government software, if I'm not mistaken, and that's why we need to have this minor change. Sorry, I know you're there. These minor change in that language, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
No change since first reading.
No, no change since first reading. Thank you.
But it is officially the final reading, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The public hearing, if anyone wants to speak towards it.
There's none to sign up? Does anybody want to speak? If not, we entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the order two thousand and twenty-three dash eleven twenty.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Monthly report from the mayor. The mayor's not here, and the vice mayor would like to thank the city workers for giving us an honor that some cities don't have. We still have running water. We were kind of locked in the house, so being locked in the house without running water is not a good thing. So we, I appreciate, and I'm sure everybody up here does, all the hard work and effort that you all put forth to keep us up and running. I make a statement once upon a time. It takes the village to run a town, and I'm glad that I'm in this village. Monthly finance report. Ms. Ship, Ms. Cox.
There is one addition, and that's all on the basis of what we just went over with the auditors. The way our reports are set up in local government, usually what I give you all is just the financials that I run out of the system, and I know I've created a special cash report because I felt like that was an important report for y'all to have, like where does each one of the funds stands in cash. Of course, those are, that's not, that's a little bit different from fund balance, like he was alluding to earlier. Cash is what we have in the bank right now. Fund balance is cash minus any obligations that we've already set up for ourselves with purchase orders and things like that. So on the books, when you see fund balance, it's a good number to look at just because that's the amount that's already got some of our obligations, like big purchases or purchase orders that we may have put out there that are already on the books. They would put that on there. But the month, one report I added this month is the monthly analysis, and I emailed this to y'all. Something that on our enterprise funds or sanitation, water, sewer, and gas, enterprise funds have to be represented on the statutory net position. And that being said, when you look at the profit and loss statement that I email you every month, it just gives you our net position. It doesn't give you the statutory net position, it just gives you what's on the books and what we've done. Statutory net position requires us to take off any revenues and expenditures that are not operational. So that would mean capital, that would mean grant, that means debt, and then like we had the access fees that would come off because that is funding we do not use as part of our operational funding. So this is going to be in your funds, in your reports every month from here on out because it actually tells me where our funds actually stand. So all of these being in black on the bottom line is a good thing. That means after taking off revenue that we may have received or expenditures that we may have done in our enterprise funds that are non-operational, we take all that stuff off, we still are in surplus with all three of those funds right now. Of course, gas doesn't have as big of a surplus right now, but we're working, you know, with the winter months is usually when that fund picks up, so hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll see it pick up. But I just wanted y'all to know that that's in addition. Everything else is good. These are the three funds we really watch for. General fund is still running in a deficit, but that's because property taxes have really hit in January and February, like the property tax collections have doubled in January, and then February is, of course, one will collect the rest of it. So hopefully next month, I'll have a better report for the general fund, but right now it's still going to run in a deficit till all that funding comes in. But I'm here if you all have any questions. I would like to thank, of course, my staff and everybody at City Hall and all the department heads for helping with the audit because that was, that was one of the biggest audits I've been through in a while, either, well, the county audits are pretty big, but this is about as long as it took at the county, so I was very surprised.
The first one's always the worst one, but then to have the former
Get all that stuff.
Drop us and not help us at all with questions that we had, it was very difficult.
It was.
They did a great job.
They did, and just like Kate was saying, usually a preliminary audit starts before the books close, so there was no, we didn't have a preliminary audit because the other audit firm dropped us in end of August, in August, July or August. Yeah, so we brought this to y'all.
It was a complete surprise.
We brought this audit firm to y'all in August, so we started our audit process in September, so that was, that was big, especially with me being new, them being new, and a lot of these financial statements have to be created, they're Excel documents, so we all had to work on a lot of templates and documents together with audit. So thankful for the staff, and I'm thankful for everybody that's helped us get to this point and to keep moving along.
Good thing this wasn't your first rodeo.
No. If it was my first rodeo, I will be very honest, I probably wouldn't be here. If it was my first rodeo, I would not be here.
We sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ship. Thank you.
I want to add one comment. She mentioned the property taxes, so February first, I think, is when penalties start adding to people, so there'll be a notice that goes in the paper about
They were due February twenty eighth. March first. March first.
Because February twenty eighth
Last day of February is usually
This year is the twenty ninth, yeah.
So just let people know that we want them to pay taxes, we want them to pay, you know, their normal amount and not just their penalties, so
And we use the state of Tennessee to send out our notices. The notices went out in October, so they've had their notices. Of course, everybody can go online and pay them, and yeah, penalties will start applying March the first.
And vice mayor, we just need a motion to accept that finance report.
Motion to approve the finance report as presented.
Yeah, good. You said, okay.
All approved.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes, okay. And next, the city manager, and I'm really just going to echo what Vice Mayor already said, with last week was a very difficult week, and our staff is, they're here, some of them are here, but they're, they're sleep deprived, don't let them try and tell you that they're not. And we, we still do have a temporary solution, but in the rain, we can't use that creek water because the water gets contaminated with the rain. So we just are staying on top of it and staying on top of the state and everything that we're doing. And like Ms. Granbury said, we're one of the few communities that has maintained and still have water, and there is water at the community center that was delivered by TBA. If anybody wants any water, we still have some of that water left, but. So we, after a lot of hard work with staff, I'm not taking any credit whatsoever, we ended up in a really good place.
Yes, thank y'all.
Thank you for keeping us. I think I outlined everybody in the email that I sent to you, but.
Yes, thank you, Kate, keep it posted. Special reports from our city departments or committees. Water, LeFaison Report, Barge Design, sewage update.
Yeah, but really, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, the only update is I emailed you that we had a change order for Rainey Street, there was a 30-day extension, just waiting for things to be delivered. We're still waiting on electrical to be delivered to the wastewater treatment plant project and the wastewater system model, we have a meeting coming up in the next week to review that, so everything's kind of ongoing.
Mount Pleasant gas system report?
And really no report there, we, I think I mentioned last month that we did not get the grant we applied for, and we're kind of regrouping to decide if we're going to reapply or not for the cap out there at Cherry Glen.
Okay. We're not going to reapply?
We're trying to make a decision if we're going to, or what's the best way to do it?
Okay.
Yeah.
New business. On this 2024-1121, first reading, and on this amend, um, appropriate the revenue and expense of operating and maintaining the department functions of the city of Mount Pleasant for the official year of July the 1st, 2023 through June 2024.
So Vice Mayor and Commissioners, this is our first budget amendment of this fiscal year, and it will be second reading in February, a shipper will touch on it. We'll have more information in February, it will change between January and February. We have paid, we will pay a lot of overtime for what happened last week, so that'll be an adjustment. But there will always be a final budget amendment that we do in May and June to finish out our fiscal year. So we try and keep our budget amendments down, and this will be the first of two, and you've probably have some bullet points you want to go over with them. Ms. Shepfer. I think you all should have this in your packet, this is the actual document, the backup to the actual amendment and the ordinance.
Yes.
Right behind your ordinance. Most of it is line items for interest earnings, and then insurance recovery. So these are items, items that we don't usually budget high amounts, because it's unexpected items. We don't budget for insurance recovery, we don't know how much issue we're going to have. How many deer we're going to hit, how many things are going to break, how many people are going to run into, like, our poles or something, and then that's when the insurance company pays us, or sometimes it's the insurance company of trucks and stuff that may have hit something on our streets that pay us. So most of it is insurance recovery, there is interest earnings, which is, of course, interest we've earned on our savings accounts and things. And if you notice, interest earnings across the board in all the funds is way up right now. Any of our construction funds, we're keeping in, keeping those in high-interest earning accounts. Those are where we're probably making, like, all of our borrowed money right now, all the money that we had borrowed for wastewater plant, money that was setting from the bond issues we did a year or so ago, all of those funds are earning pretty good interest. So the funds on that level, those are the amendments that you'll see, grants, insurance recovery, and then the CPWS water that we're purchasing is, um, high. So of course, we're still looking for more water sources so we can reduce that amount, but in the water fund, you will see, that's probably one of the bigger amendments that I have out there just because we have to purchase, keep purchasing the water.
And that will continue to increase, especially with this weather event.
Correct, so we doubled what we budgeted on that one just because we are spending quite a bit of money there.
And when we did the budget, we did not know.
We did not know. We didn't even know if they were going to approve us at that time, yes. So this is something we'll, of course, plan for, for the next budget year, to budget a higher amount, but we are using a lot of there. Raises are, um, we're in discussion for raises, we kind of started the discussion like the week of the meeting, and then the snow happened. We have enough funds to be able to give raises, but again, then the snowstorm happened, so I want to look at the, that's where Kate was alluding to, is there may be changes to how we do all of it, depending on how much money we end up expending in the water fund on, um, payroll and emergency purchases and stuff that we have coming up. But we are in discussion to do that, so the amendment does include some portion of giving a raise, and the only items I'm amending are line items that need to be amended. Most of them have wiggle room due to turnover that we could do raises in what we already budgeted. So none of it is hitting fund balance, most of it is just hitting pretty much interest earnings because we've earned so much interest that we have enough on the interest earnings to be able to get raises. But again, with the snowstorm hitting so close to the budget amendment going on, I'd want to look at it between now and February before we finalize everything.
And the last time employees got raises was like March of April last year, we're right on, we're right on.
Right on target, yeah.
Some employees have certain goals, if they meet them, they get the increase during the year, but as far as most of the employees are right on schedule in March and April. So that's where we talk about, the number will probably change a little bit between now and February.
Yeah, we just want to do our due diligence on making sure I don't need to add anything else to the amendment. So it may change a little bit, it may not change at all because we may already have enough money to pay out all the overtime that we've had in the last two weeks. But we just ran the payroll today for the last two paychecks, so we've got, because I've got to look at all those reports, so. Want to do any questions? It's a pretty small budget amendment, we don't have a lot to amend right now.
Now, we entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024-1121.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Resolution 2021, 2024-1, a resolution authorizing the city to apply for transportation planning grant. Kate, you want to?
Absolutely, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, this is our first resolution, number one. We, there is a transportation plan grant that's available that South Central is helping us on, and Philip has worked hard on, and what we're applying for, you can get up to $200,000. And what we're applying for is exactly what we talked about in the strategic plan, where we have, somebody has to do an inventory of our streets and do a transportation plan and let us know what streets are the worst, what streets are the best, and where we need to go next. And I know Chuck went into that and kind of a great, great deal, but we don't have the money for it, and so we're applying for the grant to specifically do that. Did I miss anything on that, Philip?
Yeah.
We're just, we need your permission, and we need a resolution to go with a grant.
Any comments, Commissioners? If not, we entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept resolution 2024-1.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next is the downtown renovation bid. Uh, we're going to defer this to a future, maybe public notice. If, um, it does not come in before February, we will be reapplying for the bid.
The bid will expire.
The bid will expire, and we will have to reapply.
So we're hoping that doesn't happen, but we have two bids. The lower bid, the state said was considered non-responsive, and they are basically appealing that, believing that they, the, the local bid of Floyd and Floyd and Nickel Brothers is, is appealing to the state, that they believe they are a responsive bid and they should be considered. And we just don't have an answer on that. So I'm hoping, best case scenario, we have an answer and we can award the bid, that would be a special call meeting because it has to happen before February 20th, our next meeting, because the bids will expire by then. So what Vice Mayor is correcting, saying we're kind of deferring it to a date that we don't know, but there would definitely be a public notice that we're having a meeting to discuss that. And I wish we knew more.
But it could be a special call.
It's either going to be a special call meeting or the bids are going to expire.
What does that mean, non-responsive?
Means that we can't consider it, but they did not.
Why would they not?
They didn't respond to everything in there. The state is saying that, the contractors are saying we did, and they, they're arguing that back and forth, maybe arguing is not the right word, but if the state says we can't consider them, we can't consider them. And so this second bid is $200,000 more, but I forgot to say, we should have said, our, uh, the, the grant consultants have asked the state to give us another $800,000. And the initial phone call about that was that it's a possibility. So that question is still out there too, to cover the gap, especially if we have to go with the more expensive bid. So there's a few things that are up in the air that just aren't ready tonight for y'all to vote on, wouldn't have been ready last week either, so.
It might be in our favor.
Exactly, it's, it's to our benefit at this point to wait.
So are you saying we've got another $800,000?
We've got.
We haven't got it.
If we get a man, I'll let you guys know immediately.
And if this all passes, then I can add that to the amendment as well because we'll have to amend our budget because we don't know how much we need to budget for any of this till the bid gets approved. So that'll be part of the amendment as well if it all goes, which it has to go through by next meeting, so.
I will entertain a motion to defer it at this time.
Aye.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
I make a motion that we refer to downtown bid for further notice.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, de-discussion and consideration of the city of Mount Pleasant, city manager advertisement, and we all got a copy, that in our package.
And Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Chuck Downham is here from M-Pass. And Mike, I put in front of you the most recent, we had a change on it, make sure you have the hard copy I gave you. Originally, it said that we would be looking at resumes and stuff on the 16th, it's actually the 26th, so that's the corrected copy for you. So Chuck is here, do you have any questions?
Yes, Chuck.
Yeah, you want to explain how it's set up as far as how it's going to be posted and where the, the applications go?
Yes, for the record, Chuck Downham, M-Pass Municipal Management Consultant. Pleasure to be here this evening. We've been working closely with the city attorney and the IT director specifically to create a link, a button basically, on the city's website that will contain the job announcement, as well as the city's application form for the applicant to fill out. And then there's also the ability for them to submit their resume and cover letter so they'll have a complete package. In talking with the IT director, he indicated that as soon as the approval is granted on the job announcement, he's prepared to move forward with making that live, so he'll be ready to go with it. I'll be contacting various organizations early tomorrow morning to request that they post the job announcement on their respective websites and other social media outlets. So you'll have accommodation of the Municipal Technical Advisory Service, Tennessee Municipal League, Tennessee City Manager Association, and the Tennessee Government Finance Officer Association, TGFOA. You'll also be posting it hopefully in the local newspaper, and then you'll also have it on the city's website, so a good array of opportunities for people to spot the advertisement and respond accordingly. Over the next 30-plus days, we'll be basically receiving application forms. The packages for those, we'll be reviewing those to make sure that the applicants meet the minimum requirements. We'll provide you all with a report at the end of the 30-day period indicating who satisfies that minimum education and minimum professional experience requirement. And we'll also give you the complete package of all the application packages that we've received to date. It would be my recommendation that you all consider, soon after that evaluation, a meeting, preferably a special call meeting for you, and review the applicants in an open, public meeting that's been properly advertised, and then determine or identify those that you would like to move forward with an initial interview with. We can certainly help facilitate that discussion at that point in the process. We'll be periodically giving the city attorney an update on the number of applicants that we've received. If we see that the response is lower than we would like to recommend, we may come back at some point as that 30-day period approaches and suggest that you extend the advertisement period, but we'll cross that bridge at the appropriate time, if necessary. Happy to address any other questions you might have.
Final version that you all have in your packages?
Yeah.
What was tweaked from your comments at the strategic planning session?
Yeah, and the advertisement, we mentioned at the last work session that we had to go in and do some refinement to basically direct the application process to the city's websites. We've made those refinements, and the document you have in front of you reflects that with a first review date of February 26, 2023, 24, sorry.
Still got time to change your mind.
The other Commissions, have any questions or comments for Mr. Down? We appreciate you and how much you put into it.
But we do need to vote on this.
At this time, we will entertain a motion.
Make a motion we approve the physician advertisement for the city manager of Mount Pleasant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have nobody from, to sign up. You know, the workers don't say anything, besides, we appreciate y'all. I know y'all had a tough week, I know it's been hard. But that's why we have good employees, and I thank y'all. And that's it, we'll entertain a motion to go home for a second.
I think we need to ask, do any other Commissions have anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot you.
Well, yes, Mike, Mike, can I say?
Can you anything to say?
I just want to echo Ms. Granbury's, you guys just did an amazing job. I know there was a lot of stuff on Facebook with people complaining of good grief. I mean, I was doing transportation, Bill Mead and my husband, with all these parts of Franklin, and I mean, we weren't just as good as everybody else and that are in a lot of aspects. So just thank you guys and your teams for everything that you did to keep us moving, and trash all got picked up today, at least in our area, so. It's nice to see both, I think it was both trash trucks that, the old motors.
You've been working hard on that.
So thank you.
It's worth it, Christmas.
Yeah, so, appreciate it.
Ms. Austin, Commissioner Austin?
I just want to say thank you all the employees, I greatly appreciate y'all. Long hours out there in the cold, keeping us water and warm, I appreciate. Even Michael Haywood, working on the back of the trash truck, thank you, sir. I appreciate y'all, if anything I can do to help y'all in any way, please reach out. But as a citizen of Mount Pleasant, I greatly appreciate you.
We actually have people sleeping at the water plant, we have cotton set up out there.
Commissioner Mike?
Anything, I appreciate all of our staff. Mike, I just have one question. How many reports did you have on national? Did you have? Two.
That's awesome.
Two.
Ooh, look at y'all, yeah.
That mean, hey, that.
We stayed home.
No, they were calling Adams Avenue with their fleet. Even when the other street was melting, we was lucky enough to fill our ice for the kids. I love y'all dearly. Thank y'all for the kids.
There were still a lot of people out.
Yeah.
They just went out in Mount Pleasant. I went out in the morning.
I appreciate everything.
Well, we thank y'all, we thank our workers, and we entertain a motion to go home.
Motion to adjourn.
Now, we're feeling y'all go to church, thank you.